Tuesday, June 21st, 2022, meeting of the Iowa County Board of Commissioners pre-agenda meeting. And at this time, I would ask County Manager Mole to please review any adjustments to the agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. We do have a few adjustments. The first one is removal of administrative matters, item 8.7, the image first contract. That one is, we're still going through revisions on that, so we're going to hold that one for the next meeting. And again, removal of admin matters, 8.7. The next one is the addition of an administrative matters item 8.15, and that is on the bench before you, and it's the CR Onsrood Administrative Amendment. And we'll go through that with the board, but I've given you a quick sheet that's on the bench before you for that item. The next one is removal of economic development from closed session. And then the last is the addition of attorney-client under closed session.
And the statutory reference on that?
Three. It is...
Okay.
It is General Statute 143-318.11A3, attorney-client.
Got you. All right. And then I believe Commissioner Hopp will have some remarks under new business? Sure. Any other unfinished business or new business?
Uh-uh.
Okay. This evening, Marvin Norman is not able to join us because he's been in the hospital since Friday. So if anyone, please keep him in your thoughts and prayers and his family. We expect him to be up and about soon. We have one appointment before the board at the 7 o'clock hour. That's a presentation by South Irohido Fire Rescue Chief Jerry Starr. And now that's at 7 o'clock. If you would like to be heard early and... Okay. They're both televised. Public hearings, we do have a public hearing on Project Spark this evening. And so that'll be teed up by our economic development company, corporation. Administrative matters that are appropriate for our consent agenda. If Beth, you could go ahead and tee those up?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item was a request from the Sheriff's Office for approval of Budget Amendment Number 49 to accept the Internet Crimes Against Children grant. And Sheriff Campbell, there, okay. Sheriff Campbell will be making this request to the board.
Good evening.
Good evening, Sheriff Campbell.
I'll be very brief. I'm bringing good tidings with not a lot of cost to you. Sheriff's Association will approve the ICAC, which is International Crimes Against Children. We applied for grant and was approved to purchase both hardware and software products to enhance investigative capabilities for crimes against children. The grant total is $66,600. A little bit of background on it, in November 2021, the North Carolina General Assembly passed the 2021 Appropriations Act, was later signed by the governor. The North Carolina Sheriff's Association appropriated $3 million to be used to grant with Sheriff's Office and other local law enforcement agencies to investigate reports of internet crimes against children. We applied and was awarded $66,600. There's no reoccurring cost. It'll be used to purchase various hardware, software products. Of course, said non-matching grant will be, it will be available and increase our forensic investigative capabilities by purchasing more advanced software, hardware, and other items to extract data. And that's Budget Amendment 49, and I'd like to ask for you to approve that.
Are there any questions or comments for Sheriff Campbell? I'd just like to say, I don't know if folks know, you may want to amplify on the team that you have that works cyber issues, particularly scams.
Mm-hmm.
Because, you know, this is just another element of criminal activity that most folks are just unaware of, but it can be devastating financially, emotionally, and otherwise. If you could just share the team that you have, because I was very impressed by a presentation that you're, the detective made to Rotary Club.
Absolutely.
And it's very helpful, but just amplify on that if you would.
I sure will. Appreciate those kind of words. Beth, do you want me to proceed on with 50?
Sure. The next item is a request from the Sheriff's Office for approval of Budget Amendment Number 50 to accept COVID-19 support for county confinement facilities. Sheriff Campbell?
We're just asking the Sheriff to approve Budget Amendment 50 for the acceptance of the COVID-19 support for county confinement facilities. In short, the Irohido County Detention Center was awarded $130,000 by the Department of Health and Human Services for the use and detection, mitigation, and reduction of COVID and other infectious diseases. The funds will be used for PPE testing supplies along with purchase of air ionization systems for HVAC units in the detention center to kill mold bacteria and other viruses. It is also a non-matching grant and will assist jail staff in controlling any airborne diseases and other illnesses. That's Budget Amendment 50.
Okay. Any questions? Comments? Right, items 8.1 and 8.2, is there consent on both of those?
Consent.
Thank you, Sheriff Campbell.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do say one thing, Sheriff, on the scam thing is, you probably don't even know this, but something we had of scam at the zoo one day, and it was amazing. It's a bunch of redneck officers came out there, and within two days, they found out that it was coming from an apartment in Florida, just like that. And I said, I'd have never believed it, but they tracked it down that good. So it's very impressive work.
Well, thank you. And a lot of this thing, it's not, we hear the internet crimes against children, but a lot of this technology, and we've invested heavily in that kind of technology for the crimes against, but cyber stuff, it's ongoing, and this stuff will also help us do those kind of crimes, just as Chairman alluded to, you know, having the technology and the ability and the skilled people to run the technology is a big thing that helps us solve these cases.
Those guys were unbelievable. I've never seen anybody could find out that kind of information that quick. And I mean, I've got an IT guy there, and he was going through it, and he couldn't find it, but those guys found it just like that. So I was very impressed.
Well, I appreciate, you know, a little shout to the Sheriff's Association for getting ahead of this and be able to provide us this, you know, give us this grant to help us with. So it'll go, it'll go a long way here in Irohido. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chairman Mallory, if we can take just one second, Commissioner Norman is wanting to call in and participate in the meeting.
Okay.
So that's dedication right there, but we're calling him right now.
Okay, great.
Welcome to my teleconference. Please enter a participant code, then press pound.
Mr. Norman?
Yeah, hello.
Okay, we've got him. Give him the phone and...
We're glad to hear you, Marvin. And we'll record you as present. Just for anyone, if we're taking a vote on something, there's a little bit of a delay between the time when we call for the vote and Marvin is able to be transmitted back to us. So that's why we sometimes wait to hear his, him chiming in. All right, so on to 8.3.
Absolutely. The next item is a request from Stony Point Volunteer Fire Department for approval of a resolution regarding financing with First Community Bank. And Mr. Kent Green is here to make this presentation. I know that we have Chief Abernathy in the back as well.
Thank you, Ms. Mole. Mr. Chairman, I'm here on behalf of Stony Point Volunteer Fire Department. As you're well aware, we fund an apparatus replacement program for all of the fire departments. For the outer county departments like Stony Point, we fund half of the price of the apparatus. So they changed banks for this particular financing opportunity, and they require a signature from the clerk to the board to verify that the funding source is aware that they are seeking financing. They will be financing $300,000, and we will be supplying $300,000 for this apparatus.
Okay. And what kind of apparatus is that?
It is an engine.
Okay, great. It's good to have you with us, Chief Abernathy. Appreciate the great work your folks do and the very strong auxiliary that you have that's always present at your incidents.
I will also add that there is no additional fire tax money going to make the payment. They paid off an apparatus this month, I believe, so they will just roll that payment into the new financing.
Okay. Any additional questions for Mr. Green or...
Lisa, Lisa has something.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Sorry.
Can you confirm that the public meeting was held by the volunteer fire department?
It was in Alexander County, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Sound good.
All right. Consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
He's gonna say, very enthusiastic, thank you.
Thank you. The next item was a request from Emergency Management for approval of Budget Amendment Number 51 in the amount of $15,320 to receive Emergency Management Performance Grant American Rescue Plan Act funds. Mr. Green?
Thank you, Ms. Mole. Mr. Chairman, this is one of those rare occasions where we get money and don't expect to get money. We were notified back in early spring that the state would be distributing ARPA funds as part of our Emergency Management Performance Grant. We didn't know how much we would get, and there are some limitations on what we would spend it for, but the check came in, I believe, last week, so we had to get it on the board so that we could roll it into next year's funds. In all likelihood, it will go for technological enhancements in the Emergency Operations Center.
Okay. It's always good to get manna from on high.
Right. And there is no local match for these funds.
Okay. Any questions? Comments? Consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then Mr. Green has one more item, and that is request from the Fire Services Emergency Management Department for approval of an amendment to the software licensing agreement with Viasi.
Thank you again, Ms. Mole. Mr. Chairman, Viasi or Viosi, I'm not really sure which way you're supposed to pronounce that. I guess it depends on which part of the state you're from. But it is our virtual Emergency Operations Center software. We've been able to implement this during COVID. We've used it during the McGuire exercise. We've used it in the hurricane exercise most recently. It's much more robust than what we previously used, which was Web EOC locally. They notified us that we would see a 5% increase in the next year's service contract. Well, we had already submitted our budget, so we couldn't come back and ask for additional funds. They were kind enough to say, we'll hold that fund, the invoice, for the same amount you've been paying the last two years, but we'll also offer you a three-year arrangement at the same price. So instead of going up five years, 5%, 5%, 5%, we maintain at our level funding for the next three years.
That's a good deal. I have to say that, you know, you've come light years from where you were down in the old EOC, where everyone's passing around slips of paper.
The slips of paper.
And carbon copies of this and that, and it's a very professional operation that is incorporating all the different players in the county, putting their shoulders to the wheel on emergency exercises and as well the real deal, which we exercise periodically, mostly in the winter, and periodically with tornadoes or the rogue hugo. So thank you again. Consent?
Consent.
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 Perfect, thank you. The next item was a request from the Department of Social Services for review and approval of the DHHS Aridale County Memorandum of Understanding for Fiscal Years 2022, '23, and '23, '24 pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 108A-74. Ms. Donna Rufti is here to make this presentation to the board.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Donna.
I'm back again.
You can stand up if you'd like.
Thank you. I am back again as I come periodically as the memorandum of understanding is required to be entered into between the counties and the Department of Health and Human Services. This is pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 108A-74. As Ms. Mall said, it is going to run from July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2024 this time. There are mandated performance areas in energy program, workforce program, and food nutrition program, that all applications and recertifications and actions are processed timely 95% of the time. And special assistance, those special assistance applications have to be processed timely 85% of the time. There's child support mandates where paternity establishment should be 50% or higher annually as of June 30th each year. Percent of cases under orders should be 50% or higher as of June 30th each year. Current support obligations paid should be at 40% or higher as of June 30th annually, and percent of cases pending to arrears should be at 40% or higher annually. There are requirements in child welfare that 95% of all foster care youth shall have face-to-face visits with the social worker monthly, and in adult protective services, that 85% of all allegations of abuse or neglect are completed within 30 days of the report, and 85% of all allegations of exploitation shall be completed within 45 days of report. There's built-in, I guess, if we fail to meet these, they can withhold state and federal funding from the county for operation of our programs. They do give us an opportunity of corrective action if we fail to meet the performance improvement and before moving to withholding federal funding. The department is supposed to train on new hires, follow policy, develop internal controls, provide data, cooperate with audits, and ensure that we are analyzing to implement changes as we fail to meet performance guidelines. So that's kind of it in a summary. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions? Well, I'll make a few comments just because they probably need to be in the record. This is a memorandum of understanding and an agreement with Department of Health and Human Services that we meet certain benchmarks across the board. It is not an agreement that has been subject to any negotiation. It is basically a, you sign this or you don't get any funds to run the department. We have executed it before under protest because a number of the metrics that are used, particularly as it relates to Medicaid eligibility and other programs that are administered and tracked through the NCFAST system, are very ambitious, to say the least. And the system itself sometimes does not perform in a way that assists us in making these benchmarks. So we sign it, and we do the best we can, and I can tell you, our social services staff has done a Herculean job of meeting or exceeding these requirements most of the time, and during COVID in particular, has been, you know, put in lots of overtime and worked with folks that were out of the office to get things done. Just really an impressive dedication to the children and those that are in need of services in this county. For the first time, there are some, and one of the issues we had was being evaluated on determinations of permanency, you know, when a child is in foster care and getting them into a, either reunified with the family or placed with another family member or out of foster care, not into a revolving door foster care situation. That's the goal. But that's not some, DSS gets evaluated on it, but it is not under control of that whole process. There are a number of other stakeholders that are involved, all of which touch the judicial system, from the Guardian Ed Lightam program to the District Attorney's Office, to the judges, to, you know, various counselors and such, you know, that play in the judicial process. And it is very difficult to drive that process to a conclusion in a timely manner, because if you've ever been to court, you know, most of the time, cases are continued, or they are continually rolled to allow something to happen. Well, and there may be good reason for that, but the guidelines are very unforgiving. And so our social services staff gets beat over the head about them when they're not really under their control. So this year, they've added three items that I can tell, where the county, and this doesn't say DSS, this says the county will provide leadership for ensuring that 40.5% of children who enter foster care in a 12-month period are discharged to permanency within 12 months of entering foster care. Anyone who's ever seen the process goes, you know, getting resolved in 12 months? How often does that happen, Donna?
Well, we do pretty good, but it's tough because of the courts and the TPRs and guardianships.
And then the county will provide leadership for ensuring that of children who enter foster care in a 12-month period who were discharged within 12 months to reunification, kinship care, or guardianship, no more than 8.3% reenter foster care within 12 months of discharge. Once again, some of these metrics, you know, I question, where do they come up with 8.3%? And finally, the county will provide leadership for ensuring that of all children who enter foster care in a 12-month period in the county, the rate of placement moves per 1,000 days of foster care will not exceed 4.1%. One thing I'm very proud of our county is how many children have been moved out of foster care into permanency. That means being adopted. But before they can be adopted, parental rights neither, either need to be voluntarily relinquished, or they need to be terminated through the judicial process. And there's been a great deal of emphasis for many years on family reunification, and we all would like to see children restored to their nuclear family. But there are many families that know what the system, how the system works, and do just the bare minimum to keep things going, where children are in a perpetual state of foster care, back to the home, back out of foster, back into foster care. And if there's anything we've learned about development of the human brain, that if children that are between three and five, that's when their brains are developed, and the neurons are set. And if they're in a constant state of chaos or unsettled environment, then their brains have become hardwired to survive in that environment. And then when they go to school and they're expected to sit in a seat and pay attention and not be disruptive, or not be aggressive in terms of trying to, you know, get whatever it is they want, it's not a surprise, because that's the environment that they have learned to survive in, in many cases. And most of the time, those environments involve parents who are addicted to drugs, and they know enough to keep the system going, and eventually, the children are the payer of that. They're the ones that suffer the consequences long-term. So our department has been very successful, you know, before COVID had over almost 25 children adopted into a permanent home where they were able to be nurtured and loved and cared for in a way that they were able to have a much better shot at, you know, functioning as adults and breaking a cycle of chaos. Because most of the folks that end up in our jail are folks that have addiction or mental health issues. And, you know, there's just a cycle that you see from one generation to another if somehow that cycle isn't broken. So the county has now been tasked to provide leadership. So we're going to provide some leadership, and we're going to ask our court system colleagues to sit down with us and figure out how do we expedite the process so that we can meet these guidelines, which, as I said, are aggressive and oftentimes result in family reunification followed by a relapse. And they don't want us to have a relapse, only 8.3%. So we're going to ask to get together and discuss how we can, as a team, accomplish these goals, not just to meet the requirements, but for the betterment of our, the children of this county. So look forward to working with you all to get that off the ground, and we're working with all of our colleagues in the court system. Any other comments?
I want to say, as you said, it's under protest, you don't have a choice to do it. Well, they pull your funding, and they make you, they make the benchmarks almost impossible.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, but, you know, just got to say, yes or yes or three bags full and salute the flagpole. Move out. Okay. So consent?
Consent. Thank y'all for keeping the human in the part of this, too. Loving on the kids throughout the whole process.
We appreciate your support.
The next item is a request from the Finance Department for approval of a contract with Debtbook for debt management software. Ms. Deb Cheek is here to make this presentation to the board.
Thank you. This past year, Finance was able to purchase a software system that tracks all of our debt and all of our leases. There's a new financial guideline in place that this year, we have to also, in addition to debt, record all of our leases on our financial statements. The program has worked great for us. Before that, we were doing all of our debt by hand in Excel spreadsheets. So now this has been modernized, and it's very easy for us, and has taken some pressure off of staff to get some reports and that sort of thing for you guys. So kind of like with the Fire Marshal's Office or Emergency Management, we've been given the chance to do a three-year contract, which will bring savings back to the county. So I'm asking for the ability to be able to do a three-year contract with Debtbook.
Any questions for Ms. Cheek?
Sam.
Thank you. Great.
She also has, she also has the next item, which is a request from the Finance Department for approval of a special revenue opioid settlement fund in the amount of $1,674,911 to meet the 12 strategies of the settlement. Ms. Cheek?
Thank you. Aridale County has ultimately been awarded $13,626,946 in opioid settlement funds. We have received the first payment of that, which is $523,542. We will be receiving an additional $1,151,369 this summer, so I'm bringing the project ordinance for both of those amounts. We went to departments where they either already had a program in place, or we knew that they could provide programs that meet the MOA for opium set, opioid settlements. EMS, as you know, already has a peer support program that's very successful. They are asking to expand that to one more employee. We also have at the jail Daymark that meets with inmates that are interested in having recovery services, so we're wanting to give them more money to expand that so more inmates can be served. And then they also want to do some education, along with the Health Department, that's asking for employees that can educate at all levels about the hazards of opioid use. So that's the programs at this time that we have in place for this money. What has not been budgeted for a specific program, we just have set aside for opioid recovery.
How much will we get on that annually? You said the one, what would the annual payments be?
Eight hundred or something?
I think they're close to the 523. They just give us, they upload it in the front years.
Yeah, they're jump-starting some of the programs, but...
Yeah, I think it ranges between 500 and 700, and Johnson &amp; Johnson's drops off at a certain point, so it fluctuates, but it kind of stays along that range.
So these proposals, what do you think the annual reoccurring cost would be for what she's mentioning here?
For what we're doing, well, we're, we're a little different than other counties in the fact that we already started programs to address opioid use, because we saw that it was negatively impacting our community. So we're ahead of the game. We're not having to create programs. What we're doing is continuing and expanding programs. So the commissioners have already funded the, you know, some of these programs that we already have in place, where we're able to use the opioid settlement funds. Ms. Ritchie is sitting in the back. She has diligently gone and tried to get, tried to get every grant she can get to fund her peer support program, which she has done, and she's been very successful, and she will continue to do that, but these funds can support that program, because some of those grants expire.
Right.
So, you know, what we're looking at right now and what we already have in place, and how we're looking to expand, and a lot of, all of her program has been grant-supported, which those grants will eventually dissipate. We'll continue to ask for them, but we may not continue to get them. So I can't give you an exact number right now, because we're also expanding and broadening our services to other areas of the county.
I guess that's, I guess that's my question is, what do you think might be available if you had to fund the ongoing programs that have been funded previously by grant funding? I didn't know what might be left that we could look at through the Education Task Force or the Sheriff's Department, some other way to do some type of proactive measures in the schools, if, if there were any monies that you anticipate being left over annually after you fund some of this ongoing things that we know has been working?
Quite frankly, our plan was to use it all on the programs we have in place. That was our plan, and the peer support program was actually piloted and started in, in this general vicinity, but we want to expand it throughout the county, and that was one of the agreements, if you remember, in Mooresville, they signed on to this settlement, but they didn't want any funding because we were going to expand our services to that area of the county. So in order to do that, it's going to take staffing, expanding our programs.
I just had been asked if, if, once we look at all of the intended uses of it, if there would be any available, we could use at the school level? And I said, I'll ask you to look at that one time, but like I said, it may be all committed right back to things that we know are working.
Well, I think the, you know, we've been working through the Drug and Alcohol Coalition of Aridale, which, you know, we had lots of different organizations, nonprofit, government, everything, working in some way to address the opioid and other drug issues, and found that, you know, the left hand didn't know what the right hand was doing. There was a lack of understanding about all the resources that were in fact available, which you could bring to bear. And so the Health Department... And so the Health Department got all, everybody around the table, more or less, and started sharing from the Sheriff's Department to police departments because everybody is touched by opioids. Every business, you know, ultimately, every family. In certain degrees, certainly the schools. So to devise a community-wide strategy where you could horizontally integrate all of these different vertical efforts, where everybody's kind of working in their own stovepipe. So that vehicle, you know, they determined that they needed a full-time executive administrator that could be the single button for people to push when they needed resources and needed to understand the resources that were available. So really, I think DAKI is the way that we're able to have full representation to include the schools, to include law enforcement, to say, these are the programs that we're doing and where we need some additional oomph. And so what I think would be appropriate would be to have DAKI come and give a presentation about all that they're doing. And to your point, what are their goals? And what are the needs, the dollar, the cost of that on a recurring basis across all of these different organizations so that we can have, at the end of the day, an effective program? Because that's what all these funds are designed to do. So, and everybody has a seat at the table already in terms of making sure that their programs are publicized and appropriately funded. So I hope that addresses some of the...
I just didn't know if we had looked at continuing. I'm assuming that is, but just making sure we can continue these programs because they've demonstrated that they work for sure and expanding on those. I know, like the sheriff and I've had a conversation about the ongoing cost expenditures for healthcare and inmates and things. So I'm glad to see some of that going towards supporting some of those programs through Daymark.
And this is not the end of the story. We still have litigation with a number of defendants.
There are still other defendants that we haven't reached settlement with. But if I can circle back to your original question, I pulled up the payment schedule and it's a little bit different in that it's a little bit more front-loaded than I remembered. And so in 2023, you're at $911,000. And then it goes up to a little bit over a million in 2024, a little bit more at $1,131,000 in 2025. And then it drops down to 701,000 for a couple of years. Goes back up to between 800 and 850 for three years. And then goes back down to 720,000. And then 601,000 is from 2032 to 2038. So it's more front-loaded, I think.
But our community health program has just been a huge success. I want to thank Blair and her team for the concept and briefing it. And of course, we took that out of our own general budget.
Actually, we charged her with getting grants for that. So she's been beating the grant door down every opportunity she gets to help fund that program. And United Way helped us with that as well, the peer support program, the community paramedicine program.
Great success story. Thank you. Any further discussion? Consent?
Thank you. Ms. Cheek also has the next item, and that's a request from the Finance Department for adoption of American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA-specific policies. Ms. Cheek?
We have spent many hours in meetings with the School of Government and the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. And they have recommended that we adopt six policies that are ARPA-specific. They have been attached in your packet if you would like to read those. But I would like to just name the ones that are in there. There's a conflict of interest, non-discrimination policy, a record retention policy, uniform guidance allowable cost, uniform guidance eligible use policy, and uniform guidance on real property. And I would just ask that the board adopt these policies.
Did we get more information about these program restrictions relative to revenues versus profit?
Yes. Program income is considered all revenue, whether there's a cost associated or not. It is gross revenue, not net revenue. All has to come back into the ARPA fund for ARPA-specific projects.
So if it comes back, so it has to be rebated, then we retain it and just apply it to ARPA-qualified projects? Is that right?
That is correct.
Not going back to the state?
At first, they said it went back to the Treasury. Now they have corrected that to it stays with the county. The only thing is, then the municipalities get nothing for the projects that have been done in their municipality. That money is due to us.
So, for example, and I put this in the update that I sent to the board regarding this subject. But for example, with infrastructure projects, so if we do an infrastructure project, which I'll use Jennings Park, for example, because that's our project and we're putting in infrastructure with ARPA funding for that. But that sewer line is going to be connected to the City of Statesville sewer. So we will be putting in that sewer line to extend sewer to Jennings Park. That sewer line will then be dedicated and given to the City of Statesville. If they charge any money for that new line, the gross amount of what they charge, that user on that line comes back to the county and goes back into the ARPA funds. So, and one of the questions that we asked was, okay, it's going to cost the City of Statesville to process that waste. So is it the profit? So can they recover their cost? And it's just, if there's any profit, it comes back? And they said, no, it is gross revenue. So if we extend that line and we connect on and we give, we give that line to the City of Statesville, anybody else connects on to that line, anybody that they charge a utility bill to for that sewer line that's connected to that sewer line from now until January 1 of 2027, all that money has to come back and go back into ARPA to be spent. So, and here's the other thing. We have to kind of guesstimate what that's going to be because we have a timeframe of 2024 to have all those funds...
Obligated.
Obligated. So it really complicates things. It gets more complicated if you're doing a sub-recipient because the other sewer line project that we're doing is for our rec center in Troutman. And that one is a sub-recipient. So that's not our project. It's actually Troutman's project. They're doing the project and we're reimbursing them with ARPA funds. So it gets a little more complicated when you have a sub-recipient in the mix. And it's just, it's very, very complex, the rules and how they have this structured. And we've talked to the NCACC. We've talked to LACI with the NCACC. We've talked to the School of Government expert regarding ARPA funds, regarding this. And we're getting the same response is, yes, that is the definition of program revenue, program income. They call it two different things, but that is the definition and it is gross receipts that's generated from the infrastructure project.
Correct me if I'm wrong. It's only if you charge any funds to new customers until that January of '27.
Correct.
If nobody charges anything to anybody, even if they have new customers come on... Then there's no problem with that money's being used for those purposes.
Yes.
I understand that's the way you get around the situation is you just... Because Mooresville, I think, is similar, is just not going to charge fees until after January 1, 2027.
Mooresville's using their lost revenue funds to pay for their infrastructure projects. If they had any, they're using the lost revenue funds to do that. And then the ARPA funds that they're using for the other things, if there is any revenue, for example, the example that Randy Heman gave me was a picnic table. If we buy a picnic table and we put it in a shelter at the park and we rent out that shelter for birthday parties, we just won't rent out that shelter until January 1 of 2027. That was an example that he gave me. So for the infrastructure project is the complicated piece because it costs those municipalities to process that waste. So it costs them. So when people connect on to those utility lines, it's going to go to their wastewater treatment plant and they're going to have to process that waste. So there is a cost associated with that. And that was our question. Can they recoup that cost? And then if there's anything left over that goes back into ARPA? And they said, no, it has to be the gross.
So basically, though, they cannot recoup the cost just until '27.
January 1 of '27.
The money has to be dedicated by '24. And by the time the projects were completed, it could be closer to '27 anyway. So what I was told was that if there is, money's charged used for that, it would come back to us until January 1 of '27.
Yes, that's correct.
But all they have to do, if a municipality uses that or we use it as a sub-recipient, like at Berram Springs or whatever, the fair, is just don't charge fees for anything until, for new customers, until January of '27. One way around it.
For infrastructure.
Infrastructure.
Yes. However, I will say, the rules are incredibly complicated with the sub-recipient. And we have been advised, if we can avoid doing sub-recipient, that's the cleanest and easiest thing to do. So, and that was one of the things that I had put in my update to the board. One of the things that we would like to talk to the board about is the Troutman line, which is a sub-recipient program or a project that we were going to use ARPA funds for, to use some of our lost revenue funds on that line and avoid the sub-recipient altogether because it's incredibly complex and it is a record-keeping nightmare. So that was one of the things. And if we're going to do sub-recipients, we have to adopt a sub-recipient policy, which is not in your book, which is not in your packet, because the advice has been, if you can avoid sub-recipient, avoid it at all cost because it gets very complex with the federal U.S. Treasury.
But that would work the same way, right, with Statesville for Jennings Park?
Jennings Park is not a sub-recipient. So Jennings Park is...
Even if we give them the line, then they add new customers to it.
It's actually two different things. The infrastructure projects both have the program revenue or program income associated with them. The more complicated piece of it is add on top of it a sub-recipient requirement. Then that makes it even more complex. And so what we're trying to do is remove the sub-recipient complications of it and just not have sub-recipients. The way to do that for the Troutman project, because it's already under, it's already contracted and ready to go, instead of using ARPA funds for the Troutman project, just use our lost revenue funds for the Troutman project, which eliminates the sub-recipient and the program income hurdle. We won't have that for that project. So the only hurdle we'll have for our infrastructure project is the Jennings Park project, which is not a sub-recipient project.
But would the complexity of it only be asking, if you did that hypothetically and had a sub-recipient, if they track any new customers? Because that would be the only people that would impact before 2027, January 1, 2027, then that revenue, they would have to return that revenue. So that if they don't charge, if that was a requirement, if we were going to do a sub-recipient, is that they not charge unless they track it and maintain it? That could just be a requirement from us to put the burden on them potentially, if we did it. It's cleaner, like you said, if we've got, if we don't have uses for that other money. But I just wanted to make sure that what I'd been told was, one way to work around that is let them track it if they add it. Or by the time these projects are probably done anyway, it may be so close to that, it wouldn't matter.
Which is consistent with what I was told. I mean, the key is, can't generate any income from now until January 1, 2027. If you do, it has to go back into ARPA funds. So, because for those infrastructure projects, it's considered program income.
And that's what was crazy because the majority of this all along has been for infrastructure and they know the towns and municipalities charge for those services. It's kind of counterproductive.
Well, control world.
Yeah, I know. I know. I appreciate your work on it. I'm just saying, it seems like that they give it to you and restrict it to that and you're trying to figure out ways to use it. And then they make it more complicated.
And the reason we had not brought it up before now is because we kept being told, we don't think this is the intent of Treasury. This is going to change. This is going to change. Well, when the final rule came out, it didn't change, to everyone's surprise. So we were hoping that it would just be avoided altogether.
Right.
What matters is, at the end of the day, not the intent of the Treasury, but the intent of Congress. So this is the kind of issue that we need to articulate and share with our representatives and senators so that they can work on a Technical Corrections Act, which directs IRS, Treasury Department, to, you know, do away with this rule, okay, to modify it.
And that's been talked about.
But, you know, it's now, you know, written in stone from the IRS perspective that this is our, these are our margin orders. So we need to...
We need to follow them.
Change it. It's got to happen in Congress and be signed by the president in a bill. Just to clarify, you know, we were talking about sub-recipient. Jennings Park isn't in that. We're doing that ourselves. But then we're dedicating it to Statesville. Does that make Statesville a sub-recipient?
Does not make Statesville a sub-recipient. But it does, it does open up the door for the program revenue piece, which we've got to, we've got to work through with Statesville.
So given the requirement that we have funds obligated by '24, if these funds come in after '24 but before '27, how do we obligate them?
A great question. That is a great question. We've asked that question, too.
That's another gray hair moment.
The odd thing about Statesville is there's also another requirement that we can't just give away the asset that we just built. And so we're trying to work through that issue as well because we may have to hold on to that line until January 1 of 2027 before we can actually turn it over to the state, which then resolves the program revenue issue.
And it's just a personal line that we're using, a very long personal.
Right.
So I say all that to say, we, it's like, I've heard, you've heard this statement a billion times. It's like building an airplane by flying it. That is what we're doing. We are, we are trying to go as quickly as we can. We're trying to make sure that we've got these funds allocated and we do the things that we need to do with them. But every time we get a step further, there's another rule that's come out or another interpretation of the rule that's come out that we're having to constantly drop back and punt on. So this is one of those drop back and punt moments that, you know, we've obligated these funds. You know, we've already signed a contract for the Troutman sewer line. We're, you know, we're getting ready to bid out the Jennings Park line. So we need to figure out how to stay within the rules, accomplish our goals and be successful going forward without destroying our staff, trying to keep up with this and track this down and account for it and report for it. So it's, that's what we're working on right now, so.
I think Statesville, you just, you just do the line and you don't dedicate it until after January 1, '27? Would that not?
Well, the only other thing that we're checking to add to that is that is how the line was permitted. Because when we designed it, I don't know that we designed it as a private line. And there are certain maintenance requirements to that line and having alarm systems and things like that. So we're also confirming how it was permitted and whether or not we could hold on to it for that long, depending on when it's actually finished.
Either that or dedicate it and ask them not to add any new customers to it until '27, January 1, 2027. That seems to comply, at this point, with that obligation. And just keep in mind, whether we do or we don't help any of the, anybody else as a sub-recipient, the municipalities in the past, at least, have all said that if there were any residual effects, they would hold us harmless. Wouldn't that, I mean, that was the similar wording. Is if there was, if something changed after we dedicated those funds to where they would hold the county harmless and make sure it was right for us.
But the U.S. Treasury will not hold the county harmless because it's our ARPA funds. So the county is on the hook because it is our ARPA funds. And what we... And what we, what we have done, the only subrecipient, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the only subrecipient project that we had that has already been approved is the Troutman one.
That's correct.
So what we're recommending on the Troutman one is to use some of the lost revenue funds to do that. And so now, now we don't have, I want to say it's about 800 and something thousand. Don't quote me at that, but that's...
That's an easy decision, just to avoid you guys having to keep...
So then we get back to a clean standpoint of, we have no subrecipients. So that piece is fixed. We've still got to work through the lost revenue piece. And we're doing that as far as dedicating the lines over, not dedicating lines over, how we do that. But if we, if the board is amenable to not using ARPA funds on that Rec Center line in Troutman and using lost revenue, then we don't have the program income problem and we don't have the subrecipient problem. So for that line, we're clean, we're done. Then we just need to go back and work on the Jennings line.
All right. I think we beat that horse to death. Any further comments or questions? Consent?
Consent.
Marvin?
Do you need a separate motion for that? Did you need a...
We may, we may have lost Mr. Norman.
Hold on, see what you...
We may have...
I don't hear anything at all.
Deb, did you need a separate...
You may have dropped off.
...motion? Are you going to bring something else later about that, using that program revenue? I mean, the, did y'all need a separate?
We have to do, we have to do an ordinance.
I'll have to come back.
So we'll have to come back because that was in the ARPA funding, if I remember correctly. That was, so we'll have to come back and switch that.
We'll just do that in July on the 19th?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, let's proceed to item 8.11.
The next item is a request from Centralina Workforce Development Board for the county to remain a part of the Centralina Workforce Development Consortium. And this is, there's a letter in your, in your packet from the Centralina Workforce Development Board. And this is something that has come out of, it was a request from Governor Cooper, and that the NC Works Commission was voted on March 30 of 2022 and approved a memorandum recommending realignment of existing local workforce development boards. Our workforce development board has been in place for 39 years. It covers Anson, Cabarrus, Iredell, Lincoln, Roan, Stanley, and Union Counties. And the goal is to go to a 10-county southwest prosperity zone and to realign all of our workforce development boards. So after a lot of conversation, there is concern that the local, the local field, the local effort, all of that will kind of go away if, if this is done and the realignment is done. So we actually have an agreement that, that we are, that we have agreed to be part of this workforce development board through the Centralina from July 1 of 2019 through June 30 of 2023. So, and that agreement is in place. And so basically what this is, Centralina is asking all of the member counties that are a member of this, if they want to continue to honor that agreement and stay in the workforce development consortium for that stated timeframe that was in that agreement, or withdraw from it and be part of this regionalized realignment. And that's about as brief as I can be without getting really deep into the weeds on that.
What is the proposed region? Have you seen that?
I didn't know the other three, did you?
They haven't, it's to include 10 counties, but the concern is, I don't think it has been stated where the, where the hub will be and which, which area we will go and which, which 10-county region we will be in and where that voice will be. I don't think that that has been established yet.
So if we continue with our current agreement, after that agreement expires, are we forced into this other group? Or can this group continue to operate?
And then pick up a few more? That is a question that has been asked. I don't know if they have the answer to that yet, but that is the question that's being asked, is can we continue to operate and just have a few more members join on to meet that 10-county regional definition? I don't, I don't know if they have the answer to that yet.
And I agree, I agree with Beth. I think we should just remain in the consortium with the remainder of the current period from July 1, 19 to June 30, 23, because we don't know who they would put us with and where. We don't know that. So they're wanting us to vote on something without knowing the details.
And I will say, that has been one thing that has been really, really good for us to work with as that group and with what we're doing with the NC, with the Iredell Ready Program. They've been a really active partner in that. They've been to all the meetings. Dave Hollers has been to all those meetings and they've been a really good participant in that program. So, you know, we have a good relationship with them. We feel well-served when you look at the workforce. But I do understand the governor and the state's initiative to try to have, have less groups and a, you know, bigger, bigger voice with less groups. But we do kind of have a commitment on the books right now for the next year. So that's, my recommendation would be to fulfill that commitment and then see where we are at that point, if the board is amenable to that.
Other comments?
Stay where we are.
Consent?
Consent.
Is that game, can you hear me?
Yes. Welcome back, Mr. Norman.
Okay, thank you.
The next item is a request from Tax Administration for approval of the May 2022 refunds and releases, and there are no commissioner names on this list.
Consent?
Consent.
The next item is a request from the Clerk to the Board for approval of the minutes from June 7 of 2022, that meeting.
Any corrections? Consent?
Consent.
The next item is just for informational purposes only, and that's your county construction projects update. It's in your packet for review, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
We'll be with you in a minute.
So have we had a cost projected for the revised entrance?
We have not. We have not had it, we were going to have a professional estimator look at it. We had that, the limit, and that was the redesign. But we also have some things that we can take out if it, if it goes over that limit. So, but we have not had it, had a professional estimator do that. And we also have not bid it out yet. With the cost of construction, it's a, in the air, see which way it blows, so we're not sure yet.
Any questions on the updates? I think that is a motion to consent from Commissioner Norman. Consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Okay. Then the final item is the item that we added to the agenda. And Chad with Economic Development is here to make this presentation to the board. But this is a, an administrative agreement amendment for CR Onzru. And I'm going to let Chad kind of go through and present this to the board.
Thank you. Iredell EDC brought to the county commissioners a public request for an incentive on November 16, 2021. The county commissioners approved an incentive for CR Onzru. The company, existing building expansion is moving forward, along with the job creation of 25 employees. However, construction costs for the new buildings are coming in much higher than originally anticipated. The company would like to amend their original incentive request to be for the existing building at the current building, representing approximately $5 million. And instead of two new buildings, the development would be for one new building, representing approximately 67,000 square feet, located at 117 Technology Drive. The total estimated investment would be a minimum of $13 million, up to 17.2 million. The incentive grant would be up, would be up to $324,071. Based on the minimum capital investment of $13 million and up to the 17.2 million, the grant will be prorated based, based on the actual investment made and the new taxable value generated as a result of the project. The company will maintain a commitment to the creation of the 25 jobs at or above the average wage of the county as of 2021, with the completion of the project by December 31, 2023. The grant is performance-based and would be paid over five years based on 75% of real property and tangible personal property taxes generated. The grant is also contingent on the, is contingent upon the execution of the grant contract within 180 days of this hearing, or today. So in summation, the, what's really happening is, construction costs came in higher than anticipated. They're still wanting to create the same amount of jobs at the county wage. They're just going to build one building, not two buildings, and they're just accounting for that and, and in light of transparency, want to amend the request.
So they're hoping to bring it in close to 13, but could still be up to their original 17.2?
Correct. And so that, and since it will be just one building, there is a minimum threshold now, which protects the county more.
Adjust our incentive based on the tax back.
The up to stays the same, the job creation stays the same.
Okay. Any additional questions for Chad? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the items we have for the consent agenda.
Okay. We won't have any announcements or vacancies on boards and commissions. We will have a few appointments to boards and commissions. Anticipate, the appointments for the planning board will be deferred until our July meeting. They do not meet until August. Is there any unfinished business? I think we're going to probably discuss the, the roles and responsibilities of the...
Oh, for the Fire Rescue Dispatch Committee? We can do that. Do you want to do that now, or?
Well, it's, we've got a closed session, so why don't we just hold off on that?
Okay.
And then we'll circle back to that.
Okay.
And new business, well, that's at 7 o'clock. County managers' report preview?
Just a few things to report. I just wanted to let everybody know that animal services intake is closed. We have, we have a lot of dogs that have come in. So we're running an adoption special. So we encourage everybody to go get a pet for your father for Father's Day this past weekend. And if you didn't get him a gift, please go adopt a pet. That'd be a great gift. So we hope that our adoption special will be successful and we'll be able to open intake tomorrow or Thursday at the latest. But we're full right now, so just to let everybody know about that. Also, that we will only have one meeting for next month, the month of July. We do not have a meeting the first week of July, so we will have one meeting, and that will be July the 19th.
Anything else for the pre-agenda? At this time, we will adjourn the pre-agenda meeting and move into closed session for purposes of attorney-client discussions pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, subsection A 3. for purposes of attorney-client discussions pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point one one subsection A three.